That's good.
All right.
Good ice cream?
Was it?
Welcome back, commissioners to the afternoon and back to Chair Harrington.
Wonderful. Thank you, Clerk Moss. We have a marathon list of topics this afternoon, not small in number, but mighty in each topic. So our first one is strategic investment program background and policy. Come on, team. We have plenty of chairs, plenty of mics. I know Tom Harwood more than gladly share that mic, Aaron. Don't worry. Please don't make this better.
Well, good afternoon, Chair Harrington, Board of County Commissioners. For the record, my name is Matt Creed, Washington County's Economic Development Manager. Joining me today is Aaron Doyle, Senior Government Relations Manager, and also Chris Blakeney, Project Director with the consulting firm Echo Northwest. So today's conversation, today's presentation is about the SIP, the Strategic Investment Program. And so we'll jump right into it here. Last year, the federal government passed the CHIPS and Science Act of 2022. The act will provide billions of dollars to support expansion and reshoring of critical and strategic advanced manufacturing industries, strengthening supply chains, and expand domestic research and development of technology and to support a growing workforce. As your board is aware, Washington County is home to Silicon Forest, one of the most substantial concentrations of advanced manufacturing and specifically semiconductor manufacturing, research and development in the nation. A number of companies that are already have a footprint here in Washington County are poised to potentially receive CHIPS funding to support business expansion activities. There's also the possibility that companies not currently in our area could seek to expand here in the support of CHIPS dollars. The CHIPS Act requires that in addition to recipient company investments that local and state governments contribute to these business expansions. We have an investment tool here in Oregon that is designed for exactly this type of opportunity. The Strategic Investment Program is our strongest tool when it comes to investing in expansion of cornerstone industries. As we'll hear in the presentation today, the SIP or SIP enables the financial feasibility of these massive investments and in return creates high wage jobs, increases local spending, and grows full economy. The naming of SIP, Strategic Investment Program, is clear to the point. SIP deals should be strategic in the sense that they are done with intention and with a positive return on investment to the communities where they take place. These are also investments in the sense that we give up something to get something else that is much more substantial. To steal Aaron's analogy that we use around the office, it is as if I gave you a slice of pie and in return you gave me a whole nother pie. So it is, it is very exciting. So today, and for the benefit of the public, we are going to be doing a little bit of SIP 101. We're going to be talking about the, the program, how it works. And then also we're going to review and provide discussion for you all with the county's SIP policy. So the policy questions that we have for your board today are what are the objectives that the board would like to prioritize in any future SIP agreement? Does the board support county staff moving forward with updating the county SIP policy documents for board consideration? And what further information does the board need to guide SIP policy? And with that, I'm going to turn that to the conversation to Chris Blakeney to talk about the SIP program.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for inviting me here today to, to share some of the work that we've done and some of the knowledge that we have in working with these programs in Oregon. I'm going to start off with just this little SIP 101 on, on this project. So SIP agreements, they're generally scaled by the amount of investment that is made by the firm. It could range from 500 million to billions of dollars. SIP agreements have a term of 15 years for the, for the abatement period. And the way it works is the firm pays a property taxes on an initial taxable amount, and then everything above that initial taxable amount is then abated over the term. In Washington County, where these investments are always are commonly in the billions of dollars, this means that the taxable portion is set at $100 million, even during the SIP period, the, the firm pays property taxes on that, on that first, first 100 million. And then in addition to the property taxes that are paid, the, the firm pays a fee equal to 25% of the abated amount capped at 2.5 million, whichever is lower of that abated amount on an annual basis. And increasingly so, these agreements are, are being negotiated with additional fees that are beyond that, that, that minimum community service fee that is required in statute. And these are increasingly negotiated at the local level. Just a few myths about, a primary myth about the Strategic Investment Program. It's commonly thought that SIP participants do not pay property taxes. This is not the truth. In, let's see, in the 2020 to 21 tax year, the Washington County SIPs paid 8.7 million dollars in property taxes, taxes. And this is the amount that's on that initial taxable portion that are included in, in the SIP agreements. So just a little, little graphic to show how this, the whole SIP gain share process works. The way it works is the, when the SIP agreement is, is entered into with a firm, the firm receives and a qualifying investment is made, the firm receives the property back tax abatement on the assessed value above the taxable portion. This is a benefit to the firm. Then the private firm pays local taxes and fees to the local governments. So there's the, the taxable portion, payments from the community service fees and any other negotiated agreements. This.
Oh, we lose our clicker.
There it goes. Okay. So when these investments are made, they create jobs, net new jobs, and that creates a, a, a gain for the state through payroll tax revenues, income tax revenues. So the state collects those revenues on jobs that are either retained or created by the project. And then ultimately through gain share, the state issues payments back to the local governments that then shares, a share of that local income, come tax gain back with the local jurisdictions. So I would say, why, why gain share? Why does gain share exist? So gain share is a model program of, of a partnership between local and state government. It was put into place to acknowledge that local governments invest considerable resources in land, in site readiness and infrastructure, and these SIP agreements and, and property tax incentives to attract large scale capital projects. These projects then create, can create enormous gains in revenues for the state. For example, the, in, let's see, in 2021, Washington County SIPs accounted for 141 million dollars in state income tax in just that, that year alone.
What year was that?
In 2021. And so for many of these projects, especially these large labor intensive projects in Wash- Washington County, the state gets the biggest piece of the game. And so in 2007, they acknowledge, and through an acknowledgement of that, they started to share some of the revenues back with the local jurisdictions. Initially, it was 50% of revenues from new jobs and 20% of the revenues from retained jobs. And in Washington County specifically, because these investments were scaled so large and created so many jobs, the, the, the number got really big really quick, the gain share number. And so in 2015, they, they implemented a cap at 16 million dollars a year. So, so even regardless of any future investments, that's the most that will ever be shared under current law back with the local jurisdictions. Now, Washington County is the only county in the state that has, that is even close to this, this cap amount.
And what percent in 21 of the 141 came from Washington County?
Those were, that's all.
I'm just pointing out when you said none of the other counties are at that level.
Yeah.
So we, as a county government, only got the nine million. After the seven that went to.
Yep. Yep. I get it.
Um, this is an inventory of all the SIP projects in the state. As of the most recent Business Oregon report, most of them are energy related projects that don't have a whole lot of job creation attached to them. Or some of them don't. But here in Washington County, specifically, the advanced manufacturing investments for the three SIPs are all in Washington County. So creating the majority of the gain there.
Okay, stop it just for a second, because that was one of the questions that you just addressed it that I had on that slide when I looked at it.
Yeah, the, the advanced manufacturing centers SIPs are all in Washington County.
No, no, that wasn't my question. My question is, do you also have the number of employees somewhere? And you don't have it in your slide.
I don't have the slide, but Business Oregon does track the number of employees reported associated with this.
Commissioner Rogers, I have that document. I'll make sure it gets to all the commissioners in, into the record with.
These are, just a general, these are really a good primer. It'd be nice if some of these other things you're throwing in, we're in here. Make it more complete.
Great.
Currently in Washington County, there are three active SIP projects, two with Intel, one with Genentech. The Intel 2005 and Genentech SIPs are about to expire. So when that happens, the full remaining assessed value of those investments will go back on the tax rolls and create tax, new tax revenue, which is why SIP is here. So you can get the individual investment after the abatement period is over. There's a big windfall in tax revenue. And so the most recent SIP with, with Intel, the 2014 agreement includes 100 billion dollars in potential investments over the, over the period. And according to most recent reporting from Business Oregon, they've already invested 8.4 billion dollars through that SIP agreement.
Are those calendar years or fiscal years?
These are, these are calendar years here. So the, the years there are when the, when the agreement was first, yeah, implemented, the investments didn't necessarily happen in those years, but that's when they, they agreed.
Yep.
Uh, so just to talk a little bit about why, why SIP is important, and Matt started us off with this, the CHIPS Act, everyone here ensures where is 52 billion dollar federal package to revitalize the US semiconductor industry. And there's two parts of the CHIPS Act that are really important in the context of these incentives. And the first is that, uh, and they relate to prioritization, how the federal government is prioritizing making CHIPS Act, Act investments. And the first is that projects must secure local state incentives to be competitive for applications. And the second is that there's a priority given for packages that promote state and local collaboration, which is exactly what gain share and SIP program is. Also, this Oregon is not alone in using incentives for these large capital projects. This was a Business Oregon report in 2021 that benchmarks some of the incentives in other states to Oregon's incentives. What's not included in this because it was preceded the, the CHIPS Act is some of the things that areas like Ohio and Arizona and Central New York are doing directly in response to, to the CHIPS Act. Um, this is a little bit difficult to follow, but I'll do my best. So what we're showing here is the ratio of income taxes and gain share, going back to when the cap was implemented in, in 2015. So we went back to 2016 to 2021. And so what I'm showing here on the top chart is the amount of income, and this is only Washington County SIPs, the amount of income tax generated through the Washington County SIPs annually, and that equated to 675 million dollars over this 2016 to 2021 period. What we're showing in the teal here is what the gain share payment to Washington County would have been if the cap wasn't put in place. And that would have grown to 52.2 million dollars 2021. And then the cap is the, the red line on top, or, or on the top graph. And the bottom graph, what we're showing here is the, what, what the share of income tax revenue is to the county over time and what it would have been without the cap again. So the important one here is the red line. Whereas in 2016, in the first year where there's a cap, you were getting about 17.1% of the revenue sent back to Washington County. That's decreased over time because there's been more economic activity. Wages have gone up, but you're still capped at 16. So your share of the revenue that you're getting back from the state is, is declining over time. So another reason that is important is economic growth. So this is some work that we just completed with the Oregon Business Council. So we took a look at what a hypothetical new semiconductor campus would look like in terms of economic growth and, and output. And so our analysis found that at full buildout, it would create 26,000 new jobs and 2.8 billion dollars in state income tax revenue. That would increase the state GDP by 2.24%. And the important thing about the semiconductor sector and which is probably not lost on anyone here, is the impact that it has on other sectors of the economy. And so we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars in ancillary impacts in everything from real estate and construction to education and medical. This is the job creation numbers for the three Washington County SIPs. So going back to 2015, showing over time, the most recent and Intel investments have obviously had the greatest impact. There's 9,300 jobs. These are direct jobs that are located in these facilities, not secondary impacts. Same thing goes for wages. The Washington County SIP projects pay wages on average that are 53% higher than, than the other SIPs and 57% higher than the average wage in Washington County. And then finally, I'm going to leave you with this slide from some recent work we're doing for Oregon's semiconductor talent assessment. And this is about economic mobility. And so what I'm showing here is the wage, median wage premium for different levels of education for white workers versus BIPOC workers. And what we're showing, if you use associate's degree as an example, we found that the semiconductor, that folks, that BIPOC workers that have an associate's degree earn a 44% wage premium compared to their peers that have an associate's degree that work elsewhere in the economy. That premium for, for white workers was only 4%. So this is demonstrates that this is a sector that is creating immense opportunity for, for folks, BIPOC folks at lower education levels. And I'm going to turn it over to Aaron.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. And I've listened to Chris do that presentation a number of times on behalf of Washington County in front of the legislature, and learn every time more information. So in 2023, and this goes back to one, I didn't write down the slide number, but the slide of how it works and what those thresholds are, those got updated in the 2023 legislative session. So the first area where thresholds and minimum payments were increased and set to index over time. So project cost minimums were all adjusted so that the minimum in an urban area is 150 million and 40 million in the rural areas. And that's going to be indexed to the Consumer Price Index every July 1st. The taxable assessed value from initial taxable portion remains at a million dollars for urban SIPs, but is indexed to the Consumer Price Index. And the taxable assessed value increases for all tier. There's three tiers for rural. All of those also increased. It's not as prevalent of a need here in Washington County. Go through all that. And then finally, the community service fee, which is currently capped at 2.5 million, that fat, that cap was increased to 3 million dollars and also indexed to the CPI. I would note that if you look at the money of our agreements, we, those agreements always establish that consumer fee, that the fee, not consumer, community service fee as it relates to that year's cap. And so that stays consistent. And then whatever we negotiate on top of that flex is how we negotiate it. In addition, there was.
Wait, wait. Sorry. I'm not sure. I thought that, so we can negotiate beyond the community service fee capped level.
We do not negotiate the community service fee. We negotiate additional fees beyond that. So if you look at the memo that accompanied all of this, you can see those other terms that we have placed into previous SIP agreements.
Okay.
But yeah, that cap is set by statute. We cannot contract around it.
But what I didn't, so it just, I didn't properly internalize the other additional fees that, okay, that's my.
So it's other additional fees. We call them different things in the contract. They reflect a negotiated agreement of how to make us more whole, but not completely whole so that there's a value to both sides.
Okay.
In addition, the state legislature added a workforce requirement. There is currently a first source requirement in all SIP agreements. In addition to that, they made it mandatory for the business to participate in a job fair that has to be advertised through the WorkSource program. In addition, and this is where the conversation around legislative updates got a little bit challenging, is it increased the number of local governments that have to sign on to an SIP?
What's that about?
That's about politics outside of Washington County. And so SIP agreements that exist in a multitude of places, and there are a multitude of local governments that are impacted by it. In a particular negotiation, there had been a previous county board that worked in a certain way, and the board changed, the agreement changed, and some folks felt that they got left behind despite the fact that they provide specific services that cover that particular industry. I'm trying not to throw any names or details out.
But in terms of the track record here in Washington County.
The track record here in Washington County does not indicate that this was necessary, but it is going to be a requirement that sits on top of any of our agreements moving forward. So we have to include a port if it is within a port's boundary. The Port of Portland, I imagine, will just be fairly supportive. This is semiconductor work. It's been a big push for them over the last year or so. In addition, any special district that provides fire, public safety, emergency communications, and EMS services to that project for location also have to be a part of the agreement. For Washington County, if it is in a full service city, that means no additional partners. But if it's in TDFNR's territory, they would also be signatories. That's in addition to the requirement that the community service fee agreement or the, the agreement has to have 75% of the local taxing districts consent essentially. And then the final piece that was included in this, because SIP and gain share go hand in hand, there was an extension of the gain share program out to 2030, but there was no increase in the cap. I should note that these legislative changes for SIP agreements go into effect of what's called the 91st day after session, which is September 25th of 2023. So if we were to reach an agreement with an entity before that, it would be under the old terms. If we reach an agreement after that, it's under the new terms. So as September 25th, 2023 is the 91st day. Yes. So two more months and change. So those were the legislative updates and the conversations were, were challenging. I will say the gain share cap, we faced a significant shrinkage of it as a possibility. So this is a win for us. And from there, I'll turn it back to Matt.
Great. Thank you. So now turning to the Washington County's SIP policy. So Washington County has an SIP policy that was last revisited in 2006. The policy was designed to direct staff during SIP negotiations. Oops, I'm going to go back to this one. So the SIP policy, and this was contained, attached to the memo that we sent with the, the packet for today's presentation. There's four sections in the, in the policy. There's a program overview, which is a high level summary of the SIP program, program objectives. These are nine board priorities from the 2006 board on how the county should use the SIP tool. There's evaluation guidelines, which are a series of questions that county staff should use to evaluate a SIP deal. And there is a review process, which describes the SIP process from the county's perspective. For today's discussion, I suggest that we focus on the SIP program objectives. These objectives were developed by a different board over 15 years ago, given that much time has passed and we have a new board. We would like to start the conversation today about whether your board would like to affirm, modify, or change these objectives. Please note that this is the start of this conversation. As stated in one of the policy questions that we mentioned earlier today, should your board be interested in seeing an update to these objectives or other parts of the county's policy, staff can return with a proposed options at a later date. To summarize the program objectives, and remember there, there are nine of them here. To summarize the program objectives, and remember, there, there are nine of them here. Uh, they really boil down to about six things. They uh focus in on job creation and supporting the local workforce, economic growth, general increase in taxable value of properties, alignment of county goals for service provision and community design objectives, mitigation of impacts on services, and a reasonableness of S I P deals and accountability for participating companies. I have this slide in here with them in their entirety. I'm not gonna run through these. We'll keep, keep this slide in the slide deck here, just in case uh uh your board would like to reference them during the discussion. Um, a- as, as we have participated and and listened in to your board uh conversations, a few things have um stuck out to us uh about uh ideas that might uh help support a modification of the policy objectives. These are things like um supporting marginalized communities as fundamental to promoting equitable and equitable economy that provides opportunity for all. Uh, government transparency is crucial for providing community with information about decision-making and investments, kind of good, good government practices. And also urban service provision is the job of city governments. I want to be careful about the county's uh role in providing those services. Those are a few things that we've covered here. And so uh we're gonna land here on the, again, these policy questions uh for you all, which, again, I'll just read one more time. What are the objectives that the board would like to prioritize in these future S I P agreements? Does your board support county staff moving forwards uh with updating the county S I P policy document for board consideration? And what further information does your board need to guide S I P policy? That's the end of our presentation. Sher Harrington, I'll turn it back to you.
So colleagues, this is a big topic. Um, first, before we get to these policy questions, are there any questions with regard to clarification for what the state legislature has completed? And I don't know if the governor has signed all the legislation that uh relates to both gain share and the S I P.
I'm double checking that now.
Nope, they don't, but I do. Um, I re- I came into this um after having read the, the whole packet and documentation. But your presentation has helped me internalize that the state legislature, the, the nature of the changes to S I P in um changing the minimum payment. I knew it had increased to one fifty, but I wasn't clear that that also include the indexing from there. I thought it was gonna be one or the other, so thank you. Um.
It's a composite, right? F number two.
It's both.
Yeah, indexing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And at, for the existing hundred million dollar ones, or is it for new, yeah, for the existing hundred million dollar cap levels, they are now indexed.
The indexing is set to begin in twenty twenty four, essentially.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So um
But for future years, this
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Yep. And um then I had not internalized the community service fee cap increasing to three hundred million and also that that would be indexed. So thank you for making sure that I heard that. Really appreciate it. With our current S I Ps, what is, were any of the local taxing districts that are then the folks that get the part of that gain share distribution? Were they not required to sign on before?
The cities were.
The cities were, but not metro.
Metro or any of the other impacted local districts. I just had to show that they
TVF not?
Uh, no, we only had to show that seventy five percent of the taxable value agreed with the contract, which when you combine a city and a county, usually you hit that seventy five percent threshold.
Now it's seventy
And now, so now it's
Districts.
It's in addition, so it's, the city still has to sign on if it's within its jurisdictional boundaries, as well as the port and the special districts as outlined in the law. So it just adds the number of signatures needed on the document to show business Oregon.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. I'm clear on that. Um, so one reason why before we get into all these policy questions, I thought I would also make sure I got the details right, but also touched on comments on this is, if I heard you correctly, big caveat. Um, it, there was mentioned that the, the S I P and gain share programs with, for the CHIPS Act would be part or would satisfy that local collaboration. That one sort of rubs me a little bit wrong. And the reason for that is that the state legislature has significantly, over the last few years, increased negative impact to counties through unfunded mandates. And it's really huge. So if we are to swallow that pill, that S I P and gain share satisfy the local collaboration to CHIPS, then I would urge our community members who are going to be angry at us in the future about potential cuts in services, layoffs or furloughs, thank your local state legislators. The lack of the gap increase for gain share really hurts us, given the year-over-year significant added impact that state legislation action has on the services that they require us to do here in Washington County. Yes, I'm on my soapbox, but that's why earlier this year, when we were talking about the CHIPS Act uh in work session, I said emphatically, I would not support a, an additional S I P at the current terms. Well, these new terms are a step forward. Necessary but not sufficient is a phrase that comes to my mind. So I'm going to be very interested in exploring these other additional fees. I need to learn more about that uh because the impact is very real. I am feeling like our state legislative partners have forgotten that county governments are an instrument of the state for delivering a lot of services, shared services and required services. I have already accepted the assignment to learn more in this domain uh so that I am better equipped for making informed decisions for our next proposed budget and future proposed budgets. So that's my peace of mind. Check, done. Moving on.
I just wanna emphasize that there's also a requirement in the Chips and Sciences Act that the state steps in as well. And the state has set aside general fund revenues to provide their portion of support and buy-in that is matched by our SIP. So it's
So the state
slightly better than it used. We are not the only card that needs to be in the deck for any business that comes forward. Ours just comes in this form of investment. Um, and that there is a recognition that without incentives that at all levels, so not just local and federal, that the state has to be there as well. And, and the state finally put some money up. Not enough. It won't cover the cost to provide the services, but that's where our negotiated agreements and the objectives and that the board can set as part of this S I P negotiations will guide us.
I'm particularly concerned about the land use requirements that cities will be following up on. But I know that there's a relationship with county for land use and transportation capacity planning and then capacity delivery. And then, of course, uh folks tend to think about what level of drinking water quality new firms require, but they often forget about the backside of that. And that's the wastewater, which as the Board of Clean Water Services, we're very familiar with. And um the carrying costs for that are going to be extensive. Uh, and making sure that these firms are covering that and not just the rate payer. So anyway. Woo, learning a lot, got a lot more to learn so that we can use these economic development tools effectively. So that's all. Um, I just have more to try and explore. So these policy questions and these objectives, so there's what you heard. And now the slide. So how do we marry up the fact that through your conversations with us one-on-one, you've heard, could we go back one slide?
Yep.
We've, you've heard these things. So how do you see us incorporating these themes into either the current policy objectives or the need for new standalone policy objectives?
Uh, it's a great question. I think uh the staff can uh take a look at the nine policy objectives that we have and propose some modification or changes to uh to strengthen or to to modify them to uh align with um some of these things that we've heard or other priorities that the board has. So I think uh, you know, one place that we might start uh that you all might start is as we think about um supporting economic mobility, the powerful slide that uh that Chris uh showed that shows that uh folks, uh every, everybody benefits that there is a uh job uh pay premium all across the board. Um, but in particular, it's shown in communities of color. Um, there could be an opportunity there as we look at partnerships with workforce development initiatives that are tied to these investments uh or other such initiatives where we uh ask that um those types of issues be prioritized with these companies, that they, they work with kind of regional plans around quality jobs or um economic mobility. So that's just one example that I have. Um, Aaron and with you together, I guess.
I didn't tee this up properly. First of all, these are the three themes that they've heard from us. Are we each thumbs up on these as three themes that we want to see incorporated into the policy objection, objectives?
I have a question about that. Are, are we talking, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the uh six policy objectives that have been consolidated.
Right.
And this is, those are from, those are, are also from two thousand
Two thousand and six.
Six, yeah. Okay, and then I was reading through the nine others. And so these three are in addition, they, they seem to stand out separately than what we've currently got. Is that, is that correct?
Uh, the three um bullet points here, uh Commissioner Treese, that we have in this slide are uh themes that we've heard uh from your board. Uh, as, as your conversations have evolved around economic development. And so, but the suggestion is uh how might these three themes be merged or modify or change uh the nine policy objectives that are currently in the two thousand and six?
Or being made clear.
Or be made clear.
Well, and I read the nine, those three don't appear to be represented in the nine. That's what, that's, I just wanna make sure we're all on that same page. That's what, that's why I'm checkpointing. Yeah, are we all? I'm fine with those three.
I have a question, last one.
Yeah, me too.
What if a particular development is, is supersided and it's outside of a city limit? Well, how does that, how do you apply that particular provision?
Annex it quick.
Well, what if they don't want to? Or it's not clear what city might serve it?
So I think that's how your program objectives impact whether or not, we don't have to sign an S I P. It's not a requirement under law. So if your policy objectives are um somehow, as, as Matt and his team draft an update to the program objectives, I think it can either enhance or be made much more explicit that there has to be a city partner at the table for an urban SIP. The, I, we're not getting into land use because um we don't have L U T at the table, and we're working on that. And you'll hear a little bit more about that next presentation. Um, but looking at that annexation requirement in the supersiding um as part of that conversation with the governor's office, with our city partners and, and things of that nature, but it can also be implemented through the program objectives, which would set standards for us as we negotiate with firms that are asking us for an S I P agreement.
Is that statement?
I just kinda say, I don't know if that answered it at all, but I understand your answer. It's just that I, I totally agree that urban services should be provided by cities. That, I'm not, that's easy. But there are rural uh SIPs, and we tend to forget that a lot of our counties are rural, and if all of a sudden in Denver, Oregon, I just picked in a remote place, there was something very unique that somebody said, we wanna do a SIP up there. Would that prohibit flexibility on the county's part? That's what I'm asking. It's flexibility for the future, not today, two thousand twenty three, two thousand forty three, something else happened.
Mm-hmm. That's, that's a good question. I think that's something I'll have to look into.
Yeah, I think it can also be written into program objectives where you clarify the difference between a rural and an urban S I P set of program objectives, where if you want to plan for a potential rural, we can do that. That can be done.
You know, and to reiterate on that, Commissioner Rogers, I think, uh, I think that's exactly where, when we talk about strengthening these program objectives or adding to these programs objectives, it's that kind of clear language that um that could be helpful to, to uh create um kind of more clarity going on in the future about the board's expectations for urban or rural S I P deals.
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense.
Never know.
Yep. I think uh my question is the last two um different way than how Commissioner Rogers asked. Uh, this isn't something that I brought it up in my conversations with you. So I think uh I'd like to see if you move forward to incorporate, I'd like to see some options of what that looks like um to consider. Um, I think um, um, I'm not sure where that last bullet is heading in terms of the conversation about annexing. Uh, but it does seem like perhaps we need to separate the two. This is, you know, and
I understand you're separating, I'm sorry.
The annexation conversation versus this last bullet point, I think in previous slide, urban services provision. Um, and then um
That's, but annexation into a city is how that is, is the tactical step for realizing that.
I hear you, but people that live in unincorporated areas, we can't force them to annex.
We're not talking about people. We're talking about companies
Companies.
that are looking
Right.
for our investment in an industrial facility. And we can't, we already know, we can't do it alone.
Well, um, semantics aside, people or companies, I think um, but the provisions are, I think, it's just bigger conversation about the, the relating back to the history around Nike and how that happened. Um, I think we just, I, I would like to see some options to consider uh as one commissioners that didn't bring this forward. And then the other, the other thing I had um is the tax abatement being fifteen years. Have we historically had less than fifteen years or where are some decision points to consider?
Yeah, so that, a good question, Commissioner Fei. Um, the S I P tool is built around a fifteen-year tax abatement. Um, there are other tools, uh enterprise zones specifically, that use a shorter-term tax abatement, but the, the fifteen years is, is built into that uh, built into the tool for S I P.
It's a statutory requirement.
Statutory requirement, yeah. So we can't negotiate lower than.
Lower than that?
Or longer than that, actually.
I was thinking less. Um, and then the other question I had is in terms of um who is at the table, you know, this agreement or the process of the application being city and county partner? Who else is missing? Could we, uh, or is that also a statutory commitment?
Another
Revisit that process.
Thank you. Another, another great question. Um, uh, included in this is statute, in the statutes for the S I P process uh is a public hearing. There is a requirement to have a hearing uh about the draft agreement uh before the county uh signs off on it. So that's uh when you look at the statutes, that's the primary required step. Um, now, should your board have uh other interests in expansion of uh, you know, discussion with other parties, uh, something that staff could Now, should your board have other interests in expansion of, you know, discussion with other parties, something that staff could explore.
And then the last comment I had was for you, Chris. Your company, Econoris develops a great report. I was reflecting back the other night of my campaign materials and a lot of those came from your company. So I appreciate all the reports. That you develop and it really did show the holiday of the presentation that you presented today. So thank you.
Michelle Willie, what are your thoughts?
Well, I'm, I'm going back to that conversation about rural and I'm reading the definition of rural and I don't know. This is our agreement. This is not a state agreement. So. I don't think we have any place that qualifies as rural.
The genetic SIP is a rural one.
Well, it is, but it's no longer allowed. I mean, we can't do another rural one there. And that one just slid under the wire. So.
And I don't even remember why it was done that way.
I think initially their, their initial investment wasn't of the hundred million billion dollar size. It was like. Two hundred and fifty million or something like that. Cause they've certainly done more since then, but yeah. So yeah, I'm looking at the rural thing. I'm thinking urban service provisions and quite frankly, we're, any. Possible sightings that we're going to have from CHIPS money is going to be one, we're going to want to be annexed into the cities. We do not want that responsibility because we can't handle that. So that's what I'm thinking. So that doesn't bother me a, a bit unless there's heartburn about whether or not they should annex or not, which. I think that should be a provision. The rest of, the rest of those are just fine. I, I have. I guess just listening to the, the total dialogue. I'm okay with, with where we're going on this. I think it's certainly time that we did a little bit of a refresh on this. I don't know what other additional fees. That we would be considering, but it certainly does allow us to provide some or add some additional fees in there, obviously negotiated. So. Anyway. Yeah, I've read, I've read everything else in the oh six agreement and I think, I think there's a. A lot of criteria in there. I mean, the program objectives and then you go to, back to the part back here where. They have to meet all this, the review process and they have to go there. Pretty thorough, I think. So I'm, I'm okay with this.
Great, thank you. I'll, I'll go through mine. So Commissioner Rogers, I heard your question on the third bullet on this slide as really trying to better understand. In rural areas for rural SIP. So I, I heard you're fine with, with the themes as well. And I know I'm, I'm fine with these three themes with regard to an update. And appreciating that, as you said, our next step will include your putting together staff proposals. So the other thing that I don't quite have my head around is. And would expect you to help us better understand. For updates to. The, the provisioning of the program objectives. The, the six general, the nine specific is the way these one through nine are operationalized. Making sure that they are. Relevant to our twenty-first century context of where we are. For example, you know, clean water services, and this is totally in the weeds. Clean water services, we don't get to, we, we can't increase the size of the Tuolton River. We got the TMDLs we have. So water reuse is huge. So. It doesn't just put the burden on clean water services, but rather there's work to be done to really solve that. And invest in the water reuse pipelines that are needed. We have the science in terms of implementing water reuse. But we, there's, it all comes back to the infrastructure and the dollars. So. That's where my head is really going in terms of how do we practice the art of the possible? With potential applications, right? So I'm trying to imagine what some of these might involve. And think it through that way. Or the. For the job structure and support systems. You know, our current workforce is different than it was twenty years ago. And so how can? How we operationalize that second one is different. And I don't know if that will all be achieved through the Workforces Board and our Community College Training Programs. Or what have you. Help needed. So those are just a couple of areas. On number six, assist the county in meeting. Land use, transportation and neighborhood design objectives. Well, this is where. You know, that heartburn or that huge significant impact I was talking about earlier. So these major investments are major investments and. The. Oh, slide number. I think that's a seventeen, eighteen, slide nineteen. It's titled. Go back one more. No, not wages. It's titled economic growth. Has a blue, that one. Yeah. So, okay. Those are, that's economic output by sector, but we know there will be, you talked about over twenty years. Twenty-six thousand new jobs. Two point eight billion in state net revenue. So net revenue, okay, that's net income. Twenty-eight hundred millions. So that sixteen million dollar cap of gain share is just. Zero point five seven percent of two point eight billion. Not a lot. Increases in population will require us to increase our. Housing, including potentially homeless, affordable housing, health and human services portfolio. The state legislature has really delivered. Hard impact for our public safety and justice system. And we know there's impact there. So. For me, that program objective. Needs a more holistic Washington County portfolio look. And this may be where additional fees are required because we already know our current public safety levy. Is not keeping pace. I mean, we're going to have to do another replacement levy, right? Our, what was it? Five cents wasn't enough? Increase with the last one. Similarly, just with library services and Washington County loves libraries. You know, libraries are key for career growth, for education. For adults and our youth. So maybe there's something, I think. Hopefully I've been making my point or painting the picture enough. So that's where I. Don't have enough hours in the day to get into the current program objectives with specific ideas myself. I really need your help and expertise in terms of what we might consider as we move forward in our next steps. For adopting a twenty twenty-three. New SIP policy. I think what oh six has, I was very pleased with. How sound it, it seems here all these years later. Thank you very much. To you and your formal call, former colleagues. And you answered both of my questions. So.
And just for an example of how we've operationalized number two in the current agreements, if you look at the little chart of current. Beyond, it's in the memo, it's not in the PowerPoint. If you look at the community support. Line, we do put into agreements that there have to be investment into workforce. And opportunities created by each of these companies to support programs at our discretion. We place that authority with the CEO's office. For a certain number of years, a hundred thousand dollars comes in, county tells them who to pay it to, to support those workforce. So that's an example of how we can. Operationalize, but we can also work on language to make that clearer and, and have more specific outcomes, expectations, which helps. Us or Matt, when he has to negotiate because these are complicated, complex negotiations that has a team of experts. Who have signed non-disclosure agreements from all the parties that have to sign it because a lot goes into these agreements. So when it comes to the negotiating team. The clearer the objection or the objectives of this board are, help guide those conversations for that, that specific team of experts. That come out of the county from the CEO's office, from Matt, from Tom's office. And finance and assessment and taxation. That's, it's a pretty big table already. So that negotiating team appreciates clarity. And so.
So if I could just finish, the. The reality of the property tax measures of the nineteen nineties as felt here in the twenty twenties and beyond. Doesn't pay for the level, level of community services that are required over the, these next twenty years. I know I'm preaching to the choir in terms of that picture. And that's why I'm trying to explore how. Those community needs. The employers would say, well, we don't need that directly, but your workforce does. And you're investing here to be part of a thriving community. And we have a track record of doing that. So help us achieve those objectives in a balanced way. I'm not putting it all on them, not at all. So I just want to explore that. So.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to what Catherine was saying, i- if that's okay, right? You know, it seems to me when I look at, at what you're saying and when I read the SIP objectives. There's, there's kind of a missing piece here and that's what is our philosophy here. And that's, you know, there's a, it, it goes for me. Philosophy, policy, and then operationalizing the, how we, how we do our work. And there's a couple pieces that are missing. And one is, what is our? It's the relationship to the state and several times you've talked about that. The, the policy objectives are about the company. That we are engaging with, not necessarily how we engage through the state with, with companies. I'm just suggesting that maybe we need to think a little bit about that, like it, it comes, it comes up in the game share conversation, but it also comes up in some of these. Areas as well. So I'm just, I'm trying to think if there's a point where we can. Think about a philosophy statements. And I'm not thinking about real in-depth, but more umbrella type statements. Does that make sense to you, Catherine?
It's a possibility. I think we'll know a little bit more in our next step. And then we can go thumbs up, thumbs down or sideways, right?
My point, we're moving in a good direction. And yeah, I've heard the chair share her indignation. You can only imagine.
Oh, thank you for joining me in indignation.
When you base a career on, on, on being honorable. You sit there and say, if somebody tells you something, they're going to hold themselves to that standard. The state certainly hasn't done it. I mean, it must be honest. I've had governors in here, senators pleading with us to do these things and we did them. And then they want to change the rules three years later. So, okay, I'm beyond that. I, nothing I can do. People change. But the part that I think is missed, just a suggestion, if I were somebody in the state legislature at this point, having. Somewhere less than five years of experience, but almost all of them, they, they don't know what happened and what is happening. They just see that. See, we're getting rich on, they, in their minds.
They think we're getting rich.
They don't, they don't realize what's happening. We have never quantified the expenditure side. In all of this that we've talked about, we've never quantified. We've quantified, look how rich it is for the state in terms of the income tax. And it is. It's kind of like, if I'm out selling your product and I say, well, I get ten percent of it. I think I'm going to get ten percent until you say that's big. Think you only should get two percent because I don't like the numbers you're getting. You're just greedier. That's all. They say you just got greedier. But we have to somehow quantify what our real costs are. Catherine was mentioning in regard to clean water service, which is a good one. When you treat millions and millions and millions of additional gallons of water. Out of a, a bab, I mean, it's expensive. So you got roads, you've got sewers, you've got police services. You've got a lot of things, but we've never put it. Even a estimated cost on it. And so if I were looking at it, I say, what are you guys whining about? Look at all the money we the state are giving you for nothing. And you said that it's not for nothing. If you want to be our partner and pay for the roads and sewers, the police service is okay, that, that's fine. But that's why we even adopted the game. As we all know, we were clawing back and saying, we got costs, you got no costs. You just sit here and beg on the side, tell us to give us money to do these. Of course, and give us some money back to be able to accomplish them. So I don't know how you'd quantify that. You can see, that's an impossible task, but I think that. Good, when you guys do it all the time, some good fingers in the wind, you know, saying, look at, to do most. Programs, it's going to cost this amount of dollars. And that's what we should be targeting because I can't in good faith. I'm just one member. I couldn't in good faith in two thousand six, or in any of the other ones, sit there and tell them. Gee, you're not going to pay on land and buildings. And I know that was one of the things you said those people are doing. It's hard when I have a homeowner who pays on land and buildings. They pay that. I said, but you don't pay on your furniture. Maybe they shouldn't either. Above a certain limit. That's how we did that. But how in the world do you go out and sell? We're going to do million dollar deferrals, in fact, not deferrals, non-payments. But the homeowner who is trying to struggle just to keep in their homes, you're going to pay the additional police services, sewer services. I, it, it's just not a sale that I would want to make. Maybe this, our future boards want to make it, but. So if we could quantify somehow, so we have a picture to tell. We're only telling half the story. Who's the greedy here? Us, the state. And we're not greedy at all. We're just simply trying to cover cause. They're the greedy ones. And so I think that chair is common about cock your local legislature, fair, fair enough on. But we've not told them what to talk to them about.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Rogers is a, is a great point. And I think we're not going to get into options again today, but just an example that I think speaks to that. And speaks to this conversation is perhaps an opportunity to encourage a more detailed economic impact report. Around each of these deals that demonstrates to the community, to the state, to, to all stakeholders, what's being given up, what the. The extra costs are and what the returns are. That could be something that your board might want to consider. And I think we'd speak to. A few of the bullet points that we talked about, about urban service provision, reasonableness and accountability.
You could augment the slides you presented today to show numbers of job, a wind farm in eastern Oregon that has fifteen people in it. It's not exactly a generator of jobs, but it's millions, millions of dollars of investment. It's a number of jobs and also. Some reference, even if you don't have costs, some reference, it costs local government a lot of money to, I'd say, we're devoid of language, what I'm saying. I'm not saying these, but, and then when you do the contracts, I agree, then you'd measure it. Does that make sense? I mean, we got to measure our costs.
If I could make sure if, if, I'm not sure who the onus is on for that economic development study. Because if the companies are on the hook in providing it, then they're going to make sure. It's written to show they don't really provide, they don't really cause any impact. So we have to, of our own accord, have the template. That deals with our cost coverage. And so we've got to figure out how to pay for getting. That research done and that base level indexed in our current service costs. And projected out. I just don't know how to pull that off.
Thank you.
Anything else? Do you think we missed anything?
No, thank you very much for the input, for the great conversation today. Very clear that staff should come back to your board. No, thank you very much for the input, for the great conversation today. Very clear that staff should come back to your board with some proposed options as the next step. So we will, we'll go forth and do that.
Terrific. I have been watching the clock.
Of what could we, um, what could we modify that really wouldn't affect the businesses investing, but we get our cut from the state earlier. So in other words, we only allow seventy-five million of I don't know which way you'd go with a hundred and twenty-five million of exempt, whatever the case is, we get a cut. So we don't have to share with the state and they get their hands off of the money that they promised and not giving us.
We would probably not be able to contract around the standards established in state statute. I've looked to my general counsel to say, yeah, he agrees with me.
Well, so what?
But yeah, so I, the other.
Can we put in there then?
Well, we do have the case of, as far as I know, they can't require us to accept a state adopted SIP. Not that I'm.
The, the state has no authority to enter into an S I P agreement. And the state is not a partner in, in finalizing or agreeing to, they are not a required signator to the S I P for fortunately. They have no role other than final approval in that they have, they say, yes, you've met all the checks.
Yeah. So I agree with that.
Yeah.
What I'm trying to get at is, we need to do the analysis of a hypothetical. And I don't know that any hypothetical proposal, as you have here, would come here without a SIP. But what, both with a SIP and without a SIP from a company standpoint? Right? What would they be losing if the conditions are not acceptable to us for a SIP? That's all. It's about having them step up as opposed to, oh, well, this is all we have to do and let's try and negotiate it down.
I have one more comment, and I think it's something that the chair said, the word assessment jock my memory. Uh, I feel like when I was comparing the statutory, what's in the state versus what's in a policy, there's a literal definite, like literal interpretation. Like the statutory says period of fifteen minutes, fifteen years. And I think we have a literal definition of that in our SIP policy. So is there opportunity to interpret that to mean less period of fifteen years?
Some things are transferred. So in, in this, the overview is literally explaining what the law is. And there is no negotiating around the laws as they are written. So that fifteen year is fifteen years.
But it says period of fifteen years. It doesn't say fifteen years in the statutory is what I'm trying to tell you.
The statute does say fifteen years of.
Period of fifteen years. The word period is in there. I have it literally in my, like, I'm not making this up. It's literal reading of the statutory and.
You interpret it as up to fifteen years as opposed.
Period of fifteen years.
Total of fifteen years.
We, we'd have to confer with our council before I'll say anything else out loud.
Yeah. Yeah. Like, I think the award assessment jock my memory that perhaps we do an analysis of what's in the statute. What's in the law as an origin clause versus our own literal definitions. So we'll, we'll let staff follow.
We'll follow up on that as well.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Really good work. Colleagues, I know I drank one of those big giant waters at lunch and it's caught up with me. So I'm not going to last till three o'clock break. So.
Right, sounds good.
Is it okay if we take it now or? All right.
I need a minute.
Bring us up to speed on the great work that has happened as a result of the twenty twenty-three state legislative session. So welcome, team. You survived, you thrived, we're so well. Thank you.
Survive. No, uh, thank you, Chair Erin Doyle, Senior Government Relations Manager for the, the county. Um, and the team from the county and Clean Water Services here to provide a high level informational session to review some, some of the impactful legislative outcomes for the county and Clean Water Services. And I don't say next slide, I touch up. So quickly, we'll, um, this is today's agenda. We're going to start with an update on how the board adopted priorities fair during the session for both the county and Clean Water Services. And then the county is going to focus on some other topics that were discussed that have impacts to the county and community or were subject of interest, subjects of interest to the board throughout the session. And then finally, we'll share with you what we're looking to do over the next few months to prepare us for the twenty twenty-four legislative conversations. Therefore, um, and I, I'll just note here, um, and we'll talk about it again later, but we have heard all of the conversations that you've been having around the unfunded mandates. And we are working together, are working to prepare to put together more details for the board's consideration over the next few months. So this presentation is not as focused on that specific topic. However, the conversation is starting here as we analyze the high level of how we were impacted by the legislative session. And as you'll see in our next up slides, we will be working on a deeper dive into that unfunded and underfunded mandates from the state. And we can talk more about it when we have that presentation prepared. So first, let's take a look at how our agenda fared. Our first, um, board adopted priority for the county was to secure stabilized and sustainable funding for services that the state requires the county to provide. I E. Stop the unfunded mandates. So clearly, it's not a hundred percent win on this one. In the agenda specifically, we discuss specific goals for specific budgets. So I'm going to hit on two from the portfolio that I covered this session. Community Corrections Budget did take a big hit. And, um, Community Corrections Budget did take a big hit and, um, I have been working with the G R folks from our fellow larger counties to discuss. What our next steps should be to address this massive shortfall. We're in, we're actually going to sit down tomorrow and discuss, um, the issue, this issue of community correction funding in particular. And what steps will be jointly taken to procure the right funding levels from the state within this biennium. As you know, the E Board is a possibility, but they often do not do adjustments shortly after a long session. So in between a long session and a short session, the E Board tends not to do budget adjustments. But that doesn't mean we don't try. But also there is work to prepare for the 2024 session where budget adjustments can also be made. And can perhaps relieve the second half of the, um, biennium's budget. We will, of course, coordinate with our community corrections team and their association to better tell the story of the vital work and the cost to provide those services. As we go through this process. But on a more positive note, we did see a small but really needed increase in the budget for our law library and conciliation services. Made it through the process. Senator Solomon, I would like to say, did recognize the importance of these services. And repeatedly talked about the skills that Washington County's law librarians have. Um, and the services that they provide in addressing a number of potential public needs. And she did it on her own because she believes so deeply in the services they provide and has had such positive interactions with them. So just a shout out to Lee in the law library because his. His ability to convince Senator Solomon made a difference. And we know it's not enough for the long term, but it's a step in the right direction. And with that, I'll turn it over to Zocker to talk about his portfolio on this slide.
Thank you, Erin. For the record, Zocker Khan, Government Relations Manager here at Washington County. Uh, what we saw in the health and human services space was a current service levels were continuing to be funded. So we were able to meet that goal. In addition, uh, we were able to obtain $50 million for public health modernization. Through the course of two bills, I'll say initially, there was an amount delegated in the budget, but because of continued advocacy. Through the Christmas tree bill, we were able to obtain more. So off that amount, uh, counties will be getting roughly $17 million.
All counties?
Uh, that's for all counties, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, the next two priorities are captured on this slide. Read from the right page. Um, first is to secure state investments and supporting local government investments in economic development and job creation. I think you've heard a little bit about what we've done in House Bill 2009 from the previous. So it's the gain share extension. But also incorporated into that is the workforce investments we feel are vital to proper economic development. It's not just building businesses, it's building the people to go into those businesses and provide, um. Long-term career pathways. And we did see investments, uh, related to the semiconductor in the semiconductor workforce of about $3 million. To do workforce development for underrepresented and underserved young workers as well as support for STEM higher education. There is also, as I noted previously, funding to support semiconductor industry expansion and CHIPS Act applications, which is a direct investment by the state into economic development. And now it is up to us to make similar, um, investments and work with our partners like Clean Water Services and making sure that our needs are met as we negotiate.
I'd just like to add, and the first bullet, I was down there a couple of times and just the, it was not. I wouldn't say it was a hostile environment, but it wasn't necessarily a friendly one. And so it's, we didn't, we didn't gain what we wanted to gain, but, but staying where we are is, for that length of time is a big, it was a big step.
Thank you, Trace. The commissioner, Trace. I'll turn it over to the doctor, the second bullet point.
The county next said that it was really important to develop policies to enable the county to recruit and retain the talent necessary for our communities to thrive. And while our three to thrive package did not pass, one of the important things that it did is that it elevated how important it was to make behavioral health workforce investments. And so that resulted in via S V fifty-five, twenty-five, twelve million dollars to expand and diversify. The behavioral health workforce through the existing program of the healthcare provider incentive program. Um, in addition to that, uh, the legislature noting how important it is to retain workers past, uh, House Bill twenty-two ninety-six. Which extends the sunset from twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty-four on provisions allowing a retired member. Of the PERS system to be re-employed by a particular, uh, a participating public employer. Uh, for an unlimited number of hours without a reduction in pension benefits. So I think that will really, uh, be helpful to the county. Um, in addition to that.
Make sure, sure, though, that we articulate that their PERS contributions are then frozen. That's. So we're getting this, the, so the PERS system is getting the benefit. And the employee continues to have gameful employment, but there are no further PERS contribution.
That's correct, true. Thank you. In addition to that, in terms of another bill that didn't pass, which is House Bill thirty-two oh five, which is the bonus bill. Um, I think this is something that legislature is going to continue to reexamine with regards to pay equity. Um, there were a number of different entities from public employers to private businesses who helped elevate this issue. Um, and it's something that legislature I think is going to continue to examine in the interim and also in the long session. In addition, uh, they cited a couple of different important work groups to continue working on, uh, behavioral health workforce recruitment and retention. That's House Bill twenty-two thirty-five and House Bill twenty-five oh four, uh, looks towards reducing barriers for individuals who are involved in. Uh, early childhood professional, um, education and, and, uh, those programmings.
Um, moving on to our fourth and fifth county priorities, um, obviously the courthouse planning replacement. We were originally included in the judicial department's, um. Budget, recommended budget to, to the legislature. But as they negotiated through their budget, not knowing whether or not there'd be a recession, they did, uh. Cut off the list. And unfortunately, we, we were at the bottom of the list of the five counties that were, um, slated for, um, planning courthouse planning dollars. And so we didn't make that final cut, um, which was a, a pretty big disappointment. But like the community corrections effort, we will be pushing to see if there are opportunities to change this result in future sessions. But it is, it is key that we as a county are back and participating in this process. And that puts us on the list and we now move up the list as they clear those, um, those priorities prioritized ahead of us. So we'll figure out when we can receive that funding. And so finally, to just, to end our discussion of priorities, um, I'm excited for the great news that, um. Is reflective of the tireless effort that Zocker has made for the past year as this is his work anniversary of one year of joining the county and in one year. You brought us some funding.
Uh, I'm really excited to announce that we've obtained $5.1 million for the Center for Addiction Triage and Treatment. Um, this means that the current budget gap is 3.7 million. But even in addition to that, the legislature allocated $80 million for residential treatment facilities. So there's the potential via those grants to get the program completely funded.
Ever closer to getting to that goal line.
Yep. Thank you, thank you.
And with that, we'll turn it over to Tracy. Do you want the clicker?
Okay, wait, wait, wait. I think it's best if I get this off my chest now. Washington County and Multnomah County were at. Your chairs of Washington County and Multnomah County were at two ends of the support, not support spectrum. For, uh, the legislation that moved assistant district attorneys to, from regular PERS to police fire PERS. Uh, I certainly checked in with our sheriff, uh, who, uh, made sure I understood that there is. There are significant differences between the, uh, work impact of deputies. At Sheriff's Department and what our ADAs have. And as such, uh. He did not, and does not support that movement. Uh, and I certainly carried that forward. We talked about it as a board. We did our best to advocate at AOC. Uh, and, uh, as it took a lot of effort from us to make sure AOC remained neutral. Multnomah County alone carries enough state legislators to, um, have an impact there. So the long and short of it is that will cost us a minimum of a quarter of a million dollars every single year moving forward. And, um, that equates to one FTE. So while we were looking for assistance on all these other workforce needs, we know we've got a big hit. Uh, for that, uh, that. Hurts big time, leading into FY twenty-five. Now I've said my piece and I'll move on. Thank you for listening.
It was frustrating.
Thank you and good afternoon, Chair and Board of Directors for Clean Water Services. I'm Tracy Rainey, Senior Policy Analyst for Clean Water Services. Um, I'm going to briefly walk you through your board adopted, uh, state legislative agenda priorities for the twenty-three session. Um, and as I go through each of them, I will highlight some of the key outcomes that we saw. In terms of ongoing state investments in water-related infrastructure, um, we were really pleased to see that water policy in general and, um, needed investment to help address community water infrastructure needs. Continues to gain, uh, momentum, um, as an important topic for the legislature. It's taken a long time to get there. Representative Ken Helm does a wonderful job of elevating that issue and working in a bipartisan way. Um, in addition to the typical ongoing investments that we usually see from the Special Public Works Fund. Uh, which is through Business Oregon and for all infrastructure types, including a set aside for water. As well as the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund, which requires a state match for federal EPA dollars. Um, the state also invested $60 million through a drought package. And another sixty, over $60 million in the climate resilience package. Um, both of these investments have components that are going to be important for water infrastructure projects. Um, and investments that help, um, communities better position themselves to go after federal dollars. Uh, the drought package also included important investments in irrigation infrastructure, which could prove to be helpful within our basin. Um, one of our top priorities, so moving to the second item, um, this session was to advocate for resources to update the state regulations for. Promoting and incentivizing water reuse or recycled water projects, um, something that we've talked about a lot lately. Um, we worked really closely with Representative Ken Helm on the introduction of House Bill thirty-two thirty-one. And actually, the introduction of that bill stemmed from us providing an update to him on Skoggins Dam and conversations about how we'll need to expand our water reuse program. Um, for future regulatory compliance, um, pathways. We had a really great coalition of supporters on, um, House Bill thirty-two thirty-one. Um, including Association Clean Water Agencies that helped navigate the language drafting that we had staff from Clean Water Services that worked to help navigate. Kind of that language introduction. Um, and the bill had support from environmental, municipal and agricultural interests. It was really great to see. Um, it's going to jumpstart the DEQ recycled water program, which is in need of a jumpstart. It's been a long time since they've updated the regulations, um, in a manner that will recognize that recycled water is beneficial use of water. Um, the bill also requires a report back to the legislature, which is going to be really important to ensure that there's continued dialogue and accountability and interest from the state. So that'll happen, um, in the coming year. So we'll get to do check-ins with the legislature that D E Q will let them know how it's going.
But. It, could you correct me if, especially if I'm wrong? For the lack of passage with House Bill thirty-two thirty-one, I'm assuming, and this is where I need you to correct me. I'm assuming that since it didn't pass, that that could impact our ability to move forward with CHIPS Act applications. And so this is where it takes several different pieces.
And, yes.
So does it mean that?
I should have started with the good news.
Time to know.
I should have started with the good news, which is that that bill language folded into the drought package at the end of session.
Okay.
And so we were able to get the exact language that we worked to craft. And it was, um, then added into that drought package in the final weeks of the legislative session. So the good news is while that bill did not pass, it did actually pass in form through the drought package, House Bill twenty-ten. Okay, so we're good. Yes. Yes, we're good and we're very happy. Um. So in terms of, uh, our priority to, um. To enhance water utility responsiveness and resiliency, I already mentioned the climate resilience package, which was House Bill thirty-four oh nine that passed. Um, there are some really important, exciting investments, um, in the, that package, including new funding opportunities to help support green infrastructure projects, natural and working lands. And resiliency for ongoing and emerging challenges, including Emerald Ashore. So that's really good news that we're going to be looking closely at that potential opportunity. Um, not much to report on DEQ water quality permitting program budget, other than it was a slight increase and we were really happy with where that budget landed. Okay, so next slide. In terms of our advocacy for investments to support enhanced research for PFOS, House Bill thirty-one twenty-three was introduced. By the Association of Clean Water Agencies that would have invested over $500,000 for a study with O S U. Um, to look at the fate and transport of PFOS in both soils and water. A lot of support for that bill. We provided our support for that bill. Unfortunately, just didn't make it through the budget process. But Representative Ken Helm has already reached out to, um, Association Clean Water Agencies and is looking at that for potential twenty twenty-four continued conversation. Um, we did engage in quite a few conversations around, around preserving, uh, local infrastructure financing tools, including for SDCs. One bill in particular was House Bill twenty-nine eighty-four, which allows for commercial conversions. Um, so converting commercial buildings to residential. The bill initially had a prohibition against, um, charging an SDC associated with that conversion. Um, we, we engaged in that bill. Erin helped with that as well to point out that if you're taking a, a, a building that used to be a bank as an example. And you're creating multifamily housing, you're going to have a lot more water fixtures, you're going to have dishwashers, you're going to have showers. Um, you may need to upsize, um, that infrastructure. So the bill was amended, will allow for that. Um, covering that gap in that capacity for an SDC charge. Um, House Bill thirty-four fourteen, I know Erin's going to talk about that. It did not end up passing, but we did engage in that bill and work with the governor's office to make sure that our stormwater. Um, our implementation of stormwater and other permits requirements were not impacted by the bill, which was a, a bill that would allow for variance. So waivers essentially from development requirements. Um, we wanted to make sure they understand that we've got to implement a permit. That is absolutely critical to what we do. So making sure that, um, there's no potential where a city can negotiate based on something that's actually. In our permit and required under the Clean Water Act.
So. Is there any truth to the rumor that thirty-four fourteen? I need to make sure I'm not confusing this. Yeah, thirty-four fourteen. Uh, since the governor had a vested interest in this, could involve a special session as early as September?
I have not heard that. That doesn't mean it's not speculated out there. Thank you for that heads up.
Yes. Yeah, that I had not heard that is, um, either. I will say. We, we were able to get the language to a place where we could live with it. So hopefully if we, if there are conversations that are restarted in that, we would start where we left off with that. Um, so we did spend a lot of time working through that language, but. Um, last two items, I'll try and cover really quickly. I know I'm over time, but promoting industrial infrastructure readiness. On Senate before, we testified three separate occasions. Um, just to make sure and continue to remind the legislature that the infrastructure is absolutely critical if you're going to look to, um. Semiconductor and related expansions. Um, and reminding them that the, the infrastructure that is underground that you don't think of all the time is really, really important. So we were pleased there, there is some recognition. I think they did hear our message, but I think that there's more to be done in this space. Um, as I, I think again, we've got that challenge where we want to be shovel ready. But we also can't take, um, risk with ratepayer dollars to get that infrastructure ready in the hopes that, um, those businesses come, so. Um, and then finally advocating for supplemental state funding to continue low income household water assistance program. House Bill thirty-one twenty-five unfortunately did not pass. That would have, um, that would have invested 20 million in general fund into the newly established low income water assistance program that was federally funded in 2021. Um, as you'll probably recall, Washington County Community Action, um, spent down their allocated funds in just a few months. Um, so the need is absolutely there and has been demonstrated. Um, there was language included in the drought package, however, that will have the Legislative Policy and Research Office do a report with funding recommendations. Um, that report will be due back to legislature in January of next year. Um, and that, um, process requires communication with, um, local governments. We will be, uh, participating in that process and that report generation. So I'm glad that we're continuing the conversation and as you'll probably recall, I think from a, a recent update from, I think Mark provided. Community action, um, was recently, um. They recently found out that they would be getting additional for about $400,000 that was not spent by other counties from that federal funded. that was not spent by other counties from that federal-funded portion for the low-income assistance. So that's good news. I believe they need to spend that by September this year. And that covers it. I probably went way over, Erin.
I'm assuming. So now, for behalf of the county, we're going to quickly talk through some of the bills that were considered hot topics specifically for the county. These reflect bills that have an impact on our county's work or were subject to conversations with the board throughout our check-ins over the course of the session. In addition to what we've provided here in the PowerPoint presentation, the packet also includes an end-of-session bill tracker report, providing details about these and other bills for your reference. But before I get into these hot topics, I think the number of slides that we are about to go through is indicative of the breadth of work that we have to do as a GR team. And while we get many kudos from this board, which are greatly appreciated, I need to reflect on the fact that we cannot do what we do on behalf of this county without the help and support of every single staff person in every other department. We only make compelling case when we know the details and they know the details and they give us the direction, the guidance, sometimes the commiserations that we all need in order to move forward. And so I want to take this opportunity to thank every single other employee of the county who makes us an effective GR team, not only by doing the work they do every day, but also supporting us and telling us what that means when someone proposes their changes. Now, economic development, I think I should talk a whole lot about. Obviously, there were two big things in the economic development world that were discussed at the state legislature that have an impact on Washington County. First is semiconductors and second is broadband. So we've already talked a bunch about the incentives. And but I just want to summarize some of the other key pieces of legislation. It is hard to know the impact of what Senate Bill 4 will have on county work as the land use option included within that bill is very discretionary for the governor and is reliant on finding a particular project that needs land that would have to be brought into a city's urban growth boundary. In Washington County, the areas within the metro region designated as rural residentials are mostly off the list, but there is a particular area that the governor can consider that is northwest of Hillsborough. Also, lands outside of the metro urban growth boundary would be available to be re-designated by the governor. If that should happen, LUT, GR, General Counsel's Office will need to be prepared to follow our responsibilities as laid out by the law, which is primarily an ordinance allowing for a redesignation of lands for industrial use. However, planning of transportation impacts and other infrastructure needs with partners like Clean Water Services would be vital. And we will work to keep the board apprised of what would be the county's role if the land use portion of the bill is triggered by Governor Action. The rest of it I've already covered earlier today. So I'll turn out a broadband. We did see an important pass a bill, passage of an important bill, House Bill 3201, that will set the broadband office within Business Oregon up to appropriate nearly $700 million across the state for broadband expansion, improvement, and access. The final version of the bill met our goals and expectations to address the diversity of needs for reliable, affordable broadband services throughout the county. So that's a good win for us. So I'll turn it over to Zucker for his elections update.
So this is a bill that I talked to the Board of Commissioners earlier in the session. So House Bill 2004 was approved and sent to the voters to be voted on in the next general election. It would apply to senior offices like the President, the Vice President of the United States, including the Governor and the Secretary of State's offices, just to name a few. It creates a flex option for cities and other entities like the counties to use ranked choice voting to elect candidates for office. And a couple of key notable things that I want to talk here, because there's been a lot of discussion about unfunded mandates. It's not one yet. And I think it's important to note that the legislature pulled out and made this bill operative on January 1st, 2028 to include two check-in points, March 15, 2025, and September 15, 2026, to allow for a full analysis as to what the implementation cost would be, what the expenditures and other costs would be as well.
I have a question about that. We still have to do, we still have to be operational for ranked choice voting for parts of our county that are in City of Portland, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yes, yes, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
But this would, this would mean everybody in every county would have to be operational, whether or not their own county utilized that process.
That's correct, because if the voters were to approve it, then it would apply to all of the offices in the second bullet point.
And it may require just a small software change for the City of Portland-specific election results. That's much easier to do.
Than all this.
Yeah. Yeah. So I.
Portland's found out it's going to cost them more money than what they.
A lot of things in Portland are costing. Yeah. I think this is, process-wise, this is a good order, right? Make it, make a decision that we want to do this, but let's make sure we get our ducks in the row and understand what it's going to take, have the report back and so forth. So this is, this is the kind of partnership that I think is exemplary.
Thank you, Chair.
Next, public records and public meetings. We saw some changes to the law and oversight processes for those, for these laws related to local government. The work of Zucker in cybersecurity space helped to increase the security around the work that our ITS team does to protect county and community data by shielding it from disclosure as a public record and protecting these conversations with the board for physical and cybersecurity as executive session topics. The board and other governing body member, governing body members of our boards and commissions will have to attend a training on public meetings law once per their term. That's a new requirement brought in House Bill 2805 and reflects back on some of the conversations you had at your roundtable. What that training looks like is still up in the air. The Oregon Government Ethics Commission has to create it or elect to allow associations like the Association of Oregon Counties, League of Oregon Cities, and others to be able to provide, be considered eligible to provide the training. And House Bill 2805 does allow for video trainings to meet this requirement. It's important that we have this good training because the Oregon OJIC, as we call the Ethics Commission, now has more authority and clarity about enforcement of violations of public meetings law, either by complaint by someone who thinks we violated the law or on its own, if it hears that we've violated the law. County Council, of course, has been tracking these changes and will continue with their phenomenal work to keep us all in compliance and out of jail and unfind.
And is that, the definition of a governing body, does that go down to like our planning commission?
And yes, okay, I stole his microphone, so I'm repeating his answer.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I just, and there are other.
Lots of.
Forward.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking.
Yeah, even, even Paul.
All.
Okay, the Policy Committee is at AOC or subject to public meetings law. It is a pretty broad brush of what could be considered a governing body. So but those trainings will be established.
Are the trainings, does, I assume, somebody at the state says, in order to satisfy these requirements, all such trainings have to include trainings on either the following statutes or rules, ORSs, or these key topics as defined by Oregon, bloody, bloody, blah. Is there a standard for that either already or through this legislation? And if not, what do we need to do to ask for it?
OJIC will be establishing that standard. So the commission is in charge of establishing and creating the content or allocating that responsibility to other associations. You know, associations like AOC and LOC, this is some of the work that they should be doing.
But OJIC.
OJIC will.
Define.
They'll, they'll define the standard. They will approve the trainings that are provided, otherwise not allow them to continue. So they will designate one of those entities or multiple of those entities. And I don't think that they would designate without having reviewed what's included in the training for sufficiency. I'm just going to maybe go out on that limb on behalf of OJIC. So.
That's great.
Yeah. So back.
Well, since it's fairground week here. So the legislature delegated about $12 million to be used towards several different county fair programs. One is a capital improvement program grants, so that's $9 million. And then $3 million for maintenance and repair of county fairgrounds. I do want to note, there were four separate bills that came that all asked to remove the requirement that the amount of net proceeds from the Oregon State Lottery allocated to county fair account not exceed $1.53 million annually. So while these bills did not pass, I think that this is going to continue to be something that is brought up in future legislative sessions. And in addition, entities that were disparitely impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic on revenue as well as potential grants for fairgrounds used as emergency evacuation sites did not pass. I think all of these bills coupled together really elevated the importance of fairgrounds, even though they didn't pass, but also will be ongoing issues that the legislature will continue to have to look at.
Onto transportation. The transportation work that took place in the 2023 session was really focused on funding, but was not really a comprehensive review of the revenue structures that support our transportation system. Instead, conversations focused on the Oregon Department of Transportation or ODOT's ability to pay for its major projects that are coming soon, as well as his relationship with local governments to finance our transportation projects. House Bill 2101, which Commissioner Willie had brought up from the AOC updates, reflects the work of AOC to reach a positive outcome for the state fund exchange, which allows us to trade our federal funds in for state funds to avoid federalization of a project which can increase overall costs and stretch capacity. There is provisions for a dollar-for-dollar exchange up to $35 million at the state level and further negotiations between the Association of Oregon Counties, League of Oregon Cities, and ODOT to finalize the rest of that, how the Surface Transportation Block Grant functions. Next week, I will be joining LUT to bring to your board a further conversation about the next steps related to tolling. But it was definitely a challenging conversation during the session until the governor put a pause on the collection of tolls for two years. It does not stop the rest of the work to implement tolling. We are now back in the thick of the conversations to find a path forward for tolling within the region as a piece of the overall revenue system that is needed to improve, operate, and maintain our transportation system. And then finally, to set the state up for its local match needs of needed funding for a large grant application for the interstate bridge replacement project, the I-5 Bridge Replacement Project. The legislature allocated 25 million for the next biennium and has made public commitments for future bienniums investments to add up to our total of $1 billion in local funds from the state that will match Washington, the state of Washington's commitment, not our commitment. The project team for the bridge replacement has approached me to request a letter of support for their federal grant application. And if this board is comfortable, I will work with LUT to get a draft together for your consideration in the next few weeks. Do, is that acceptable to this? Thank you all. Finally, one common theme that we have seen, not just in, within our structures, but within our city partners, is the need to have state facilities raised up to urban standards when they have changed from the connecting highways between cities into urban arterials like Hall Boulevard. While Hall Boulevard was not transferred by a bill, instead, the legislature decided they were tired of doing one-offs and wanted to set up a process instead to do, to identify the facilities that should be considered for jurisdictional prod, jurisdictional transfer projects to figure out what, which are most ready and can be funded through. And they're going to do that through an advisory committee to ODOT. And we are going to have to watch how those roads are reviewed and the opportunities, the new system they provide for our facilities throughout the county. So instead of one-offs, we will be looking at a systemic approach to potential for jurisdictional transfer and finding the funds from the state to do it.
Am I just fatigued because we did work on this at the state legislature while I was a metro counselor? It's like, I thought we did that work already for our region.
Our region has done that work for our region, but has not gone to ODOT for purposes of them prioritizing and spending all the fun, funding. So intermittently, they'll see bills, one-off bills to establish a jurisdictional transfer. And that also has not taken place across the rest of the state. And this is a more statewide, comprehensive plan to avoid doing one-off bills, which I'm sure will never go away, but it is the plan for a process.
So I'm happy that they're going to look at it for the whole state, but doesn't that mean we're still stuck?
I think the biggest.
Hearing that right?
I think the biggest sticking point is funding. And that has, and therefore, by prioritizing, by readiness, which we've already established within this region, which sets us a step ahead as the process kicks off, but also the available funding, which is going to be, always has been, the biggest sticking point when it comes to the state's obligation to bring those roads up to standard before any jurisdiction is willing to take it on.
I understand. I'll come back to this in my comments.
All right.
Thank you, Erin.
But wait a second.
Oh, sorry.
Last line?
Oh.
Didn't pass, but got one-tenth of the funding.
But the Great Streets Program is a program that's intended to bring up the safety and usability of a variety of urban arterials. There was a bill that was put forward by a number of our jurisdictional partners. It didn't get any money through that bill. And instead, they just, $1 million, so we'll get an intersection somewhere in the state related to the Great Streets Program. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Staff, don't knock yourself out over this. Let someplace in the state do it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you, Erin. Earlier in the session, we came and we talked about the impacts of the medical examiner situation in the state and the impacts that were going to hit the county. We put together a joint request asking for funding with other county partners, but by repeated attempts, we were not able to get those meets met and funded. What we've learned is that the Oregon State Police is going to be holding an interim work group to examine the issue across the entire state. And we're currently seeking out other potential options, which may include an emergency board request after debriefing with legislators to get their take on the issue.
Now to hear from me for a couple of slides in a row. First, public safety. And Chair, I heard your questions of our county council this morning related to public defense system overhauls and what it means. I don't think I have the level of detail necessarily prepared for today, but we'll continue talking about it.
Awesome.
There were reforms and investments made in the public defense system. First, the structural reform in Senate Bill 3337, reset the Oversight Commission and increased its scope of topics that it would be required to address to include pay structure, budget process, and training for public defenders. The bill also required the courts, the local courts, to create local coordinated public safety, unrepresented defendant crisis plans. Bountiful. The state is required to give guidance to the courts by next month. And then, in addition, the state is required to create a training program for public defenders by September 1st. There will be a report to the legislature in mid-October to see how the work of the commission has progressed in moving them forward to their final form that they will take on. In addition, the public defense budget saw an increase in the budget by 14.8% of more funding for public defense services across the state and set aside additional funds for the E-Board to allocate after the needed structural reform is continued as a way of saying, have you done your work? Is it, have it proving effective? Do you need more money? We have it set aside. I'm happy to dig deeper if you need it, but they're starting the process of this reform. As the Chair noted, House Bill 2054 was the first reform for Assistant Deputy District Attorneys. In addition, there was a bill, the budget originally included additional judges for Washington County, two additional judges for Washington County's court. But no judges were given to anti-county across the state. They just felt that they didn't have funding for that. So that is, you know, not going to help our court process, but might help with our finding courtrooms process. And then finally, one of the major conversations that took place throughout the session was the, how we are going to deal with the aid and assist population, those that aren't considered unable to aid and assist in their own defense. So there are two pieces to this. One is addressing community placement opportunities. There was a bill, oh, I didn't put this in red, I missed this one. House Bill 2506 would have reformed zoning around residential facilities, which would have included secured facilities that could serve as housing for those unable to aid and assist in their own defense so that they were subject to the same standards as all other housing types. Unfortunately, that bill did not pass. And then Senate Bill 319, which was going to address our liability concerns for taking folks back from the state hospital who pose a risk to the community and therefore, a risk, a liability risk to the county and other service providers. who pose a risk to the community and therefore a risk, a liability risk to the county and other service providers. That did not pass. However, there was a set aside of two point nine million dollars for reimbursements to counties and local providers for community housing. If claims should be brought. In addition to that, is there is a requirement for the Department of Administrative Services to create a recommendation for how the state, county and private providers can find liability insurance, a tool which really doesn't exist right now. And to ensure that we have the care providers for this population. Brad Anderson was vital in those conversations and has been an amazing ally in making sure that we are up to speed. I will also say that our partner counties, Lane County in particular, has really taken on a lot of this work. And we work in coordination with each other, helping. So they helped on aid and assist and I helped on land use. So to turn to the next slide. On the last of our hot topics, housing and land use was kind of a big deal this session, just like every other session. The big package was House Bill two thousand one, which included the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis, youth homelessness programs, pilot program for funding for middle income housing development, which might include paying for some of the infrastructure needs, eviction reform and agricultural housing funding. And then they had to follow up with House Bill twenty eighty nine, because when you write a housing land use package in sixty days, you get stuff wrong. And so House Bill twenty eighty nine was a technical assistance or a technical fix bill. Really good news for us from what's something that we've advocated really passionately around in this county is included in House Bill twenty seventy twenty seventy one, which is a comprehensive tax credit bill, was the tax credit for property owners that sell affordable housing projects to an affordable housing selling provider to preserve those units as affordable housing. This is one piece of the set of tools that we really need. This was originally House Bill twenty six fifty three, which we provided a lot of testimony in favor of because of what we have seen happening is, you know, test, the first cases are coming up as things are reading, reaching their expiration in Washington County. Big area, House Bill thirty one ninety seven, this is where we really took on a lot of work on behalf of the counties. And we did have the partnership of a number of other counties coming in and testifying with us, as well as AOC about the clear and objective standards, the litigation that Tom mentioned this morning on our goal five areas. So this was our solution. It's not perfect, but it's way better than the amount of work we would have had to do immediately. So it's, it's a good win for Washington County. And then finally, as Tracy mentioned, House Bill thirty four fourteen, there were, from the county's perspective, the UGB expansion process really left us to the side. And that is not how things work in Washington County. And looking, there were requirements around annexation, but that doesn't really work when your UGB is so much bigger than you can't annex. You have to get through that UGB. So there would have been significant changes. We did work very hard as well on that variance process with our partners. We got some reforms. It's still not a bill that we could support. It did not pass, but it did not pass by one vote. They got a fifteen in favor. Sixteen is what it takes to pass. There were seven members absent that day. So if it does come back in a short emergency session, that is not indicative of continuing the conversation so that we're all comfortable with the outcomes. So those are the hot topics. There was a lot. We're happy to answer questions if they come up, if you hear about other bills. But now in the interest of not overloading you too much more, the three of us are going to have a quick discussion about what the next steps are for, for the GR teams of both the county and Clean Water Services. For closing out the twenty twenty three session, it's my understanding, Tracy, you want to talk about your end of session?
Summary, yes.
Really hard.
No more bills.
No more bills.
Yes, now Clean Water Services is preparing its own summary of legislation just for us to have as record and to share with our staff. And so that should be hopefully done by the end of this week. And we'd be happy to share that document with the board as well.
And then also, as we're closing out the twenty twenty three session, we will be, as we noted, speaking to the unfunded mandate. We're going to find some structure and format where the information is clearly conveyed. It will require conversations with leadership, with our departments and with each other. In the meantime, we'll also be working to hire someone else to help lift this for the DR team. But that memo, we're hopeful we can get done in the next couple of months so that you can start that process. And we will start that process of working with you on how we tell the story of the impacts they are having as a state legislature. And some of the storytelling about what it is that counties do so that we can have improved outcomes over time and set you up for those conversations, which you discussed at your roundtable, wanting to really be vocal and involved in that process. And then, because we should, a lot of our delegation worked really hard on our behalf and they took some hard conversations and pushed them forward. So we will be drafting a thank you letter to every member of our congressional delegation. And as we get through that process, we will bring those as a stack of letters for your consideration and approval and signature to send out to our delegation.
And with those letters, colleagues, would you be comfortable if that we sign them? We'll see the template for it. But I'd also like our GR teams to be signatories on them, given the presence of our GR team.
I, I agree. I, I, I agree with that. I'm also, I'm also wondering what, how do we, how do we appreciate their staffs? I think that that's another, they do so much work in as well, and maybe that's a separate issue. And maybe it's from just the GR team. I don't know. But I would like to just say, I think we should be looking at the staff to our Washington County.
Yeah, question. I think we can come up with some internal ideas on the chat.
Okay. So I'm, I'm good with, with all of us being on that. So you have a little bit more?
Yeah, so we mentioned a number of places where there's continuing work and work groups. So we will be participating in that as part of your GR team with staff. One that was not mentioned as we were talking about other things that we were doing is the Housing Production Work Group. There is, so in House Bill two thousand one, there was an ongoing conversation of what the county's role should be in urban unincorporated areas for housing production strategies and how we zone to meet the requirements of what statewide housing need analysis would allocate to those urban unincorporated areas. And we pointed out, define urban unincorporated area in a way that comprehensively covers what Washington County looks like, let alone every county. And they realized they couldn't do that in sixty days and said they'd kick it to a work group over the interim. So we will be partnering, or not partnering, we will, we have been assigned to a work room that includes our city partners, fellow counties that are impacted with technical and political folks sitting around the table. We will have those conversations. My goal is to work with LUT to make sure that I, we never overextend the capacity of our staff and that we take a real, a realistic look of what it means for different areas of urban unincorporated and how cities should play a predominant role when lands are within their jurisdictional boundaries or should eventually be in their jurisdictional boundaries so that we are not planning at odds of each other's goals. But also not overwhelming anyone's particular set of resources. Again, the tolling conversation is going to take up a huge chunk of work. The E-Board conversation, we're hopeful there's going to be moments for us to receive the funding that we need, as Zucker talked about. And then the Medical Examiners Work Group as well, amongst others. And then we are obviously going to work on a twenty twenty four agenda, which will probably mostly focus on picking up the pieces that were dropped in this twenty twenty three session. So we'll be going through that process that we've continued to do, working with Tracy and her team to make sure that it's a comprehensive, but recognizing that the twenty twenty four state session is real short and we shouldn't ask for too much. And then, Tracy, did you want to talk about education outreach tours?
Yeah, so we will be doing some, planning for some legislator education outreach tours in the fall. And we'd hope to do that this last January, between the election and the start of session. We found the availability was pretty poor of legislators and their staff, so we're going to revisit that for this fall. It's, you know, in an ideal sense, we'd love to get them out to Fern Hill. We'd love to get them to water resource recovery facilities. So kind of figuring out, mapping out what that looks like for the time they've got available. We've got a lot of legislators that are still new that haven't been out to water resource recovery facilities, so priority for us.
So just because everybody loves a good calendar, these are how many days we have left the twenty twenty four session, which is scheduled out in green. This is just to, you know, let you know where we are. And that is our presentation. We thank you for your time, patience, consideration and questions, and haven't answered anything further.
So colleagues, I'm hoping we can finish up this topic by three thirty, so we can go right into our executive session. So this is an opportunity for you to ask further questions and make comments. Who wants to go first?
Mine's an easy question. I see alleged days are in September. Is there trying to get ahead of the twenty four short session? Is there something we're going to be doing on alleged days?
So alleged days are programmed by the committees themselves, but if there is a particular topic that we're prepared for, we will work with our, the chairs, especially those that represent us as part of our delegation to get onto the agendas. So we'll work to figure out what those opportunities might be and how we can be participatory in it.
That's something I have.
Commissioner Tracy, go ahead. I have a quick comment and it is directed at the two of you and at Tracy. Thank you very much for all the work, the hard work, the long hours, the, the focus. And it shows in the results. And I, I want you all to know, I appreciate it. I'm also hoping that there is that next year there'll be a staffing changes and support changes that allow for a little bit more flexibility moving forward. So I just want to be on record with that. But thank you very much for the work that, that you do. It's, it's great.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fai, or Commissioner Rogers?
Yeah, I, I also have an easy question for you here. And this is the fairgrounds, just for my own curiosity, when you were, I didn't want to interrupt your flow. But the net proceeds from the Oregon State Lottery, it didn't pass these bills, but you said one point five million annually. How much is it now? Is that the current amount?
So what, it's capped at one point five three million. So what these bills were seeking to do was remove that cap so that more funds could be sent to county fairgrounds. So I, I think, you know, this, these came from several different legislators. They gained bipartisan support, so that's why I'm, I was saying that I think they're going to come back in another form. Because there's a lot of passion for fairgrounds in the state.
Yeah, thank you. This is amazing work. Erin, I heard you twice yesterday and today. You're doing a phenomenal job of how you present and make it very entertaining and relevant to the constituents that you're, or the audience you're talking to. So I really enjoyed your presentation yesterday. Very specific to WCCC and then today as well. And I kept reflecting the first, when we were embarking on this journey early on, how there were over three thousand bills and I was overwhelmed. I was overwhelmed for you, but you all did a phenomenal job, just the two of you. And you prevailed, so congratulations. And you make it look easy. I'm sure you could use a lot of more bodies to help you.
We're, we're working on that third one, bringing that back to the table.
Good job, Tracy.
Thank you for that budget.
Budget note, Tanya. But Tracy, great job for, and it sounds like it was a win-win for Representative Ken Helm.
We do appreciate it.
Commissioner Fai and Commissioners, can I just clarify? The third GR position is funded in the budget. Given we were in the midst of legislative session, that is not the most strategic time to be recruiting a third member. So the team, as a team, decided to pause on any recruitment until after the session. So they are working on that recruitment. That is a funded vacant position in the budget.
Thank you for that funded vacant position.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you. It's always amazing to me, the array of bills. It seems like we don't have any technology to track all three thousand, figure out what's in them. I have a quick analysis, so I, I don't know what technology you all are using, but maybe.
It'd be a lot harder if we didn't have Bill Tracker, which is the system we use.
That's, that's a state, but I mean, what internal?
The system we use, we have a contract with an organization, a product called Bill Tracker.
I've seen that product, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we use to, that are internal.
If, if technology can read seven or eight thousand papers in a few seconds, certain machine, why can't we read that many bills? Have a quick digest of it so that you don't have to work quite so hard reading it. So, I don't know. Just a thought. Burn your eyes out.
I'll just editorialize that I wasn't able to read all the Bill Tracker reports that they gave us. So
Yeah, just amazing.
This existing non-AI brain just can't take in all that information and all the other information that we have to read to do our job, so. It's hard.
Yeah, all right, for sure. Just one quick comment on the fairgrounds money that you were just talking about, the three million dollars. We did get enough money to, at least, but new fencing around the fairgrounds that will be going up as soon as the bear is over. And it's going to significantly enhance, that looks at bear, it's much better than the chain link that we have.
Cool. I'll try to be fast. First, I want to thank my colleagues for being willing to go down to the legislature and testify. I know there were times when I wanted to do it, but my schedule didn't allow that and you covered it and I appreciate it. But also in general, you're open to that, so thank you. Secondly, I do have some questions and I will follow up on that versus take time here. I did review the Bill Tracker information you had here with a particular eye towards those partial or fully unfunded mandates, and that's what I'll be following up on. I did, oh, sorry, this was supposed to be my second item. Where did my blue page go? On transportation and the jurisdictional transfer for Hall Boulevard, I did read in the transportation details that there's a small portion that's in an urban unincorporated area. I'm very interested to know, what does it take for us to transfer that over to the city in the timeframe of the interim session and/or the long session of twenty five to just rule out anybody saying, well, it's not continuous in the city, blah, blah, blah. It's like, okay, we've got UPAAs, let's just do it, bite the bullet, go for it. And get that clarity done so that that can't be used as a stumbling block. But I know that's not the biggest stumbling block by a big stretch, but eliminate them where we can. I'll follow up on thirty four fourteen B and my read of that with regard to providing further input on that in advance of any next sessions. Here's another big area of concern for me. And it's going to be on a theme that we're going to be engaging more on with public safety and justice. First, I want to start with kudos to our jail deputies and other staff in our jail. All of this is relative to the jail. We're all very, very well aware of the staff vacancy problem that is being worked and taking time. Kudos to command staff, the sheriff command staff, jail deputies and all the sort of non-certified staff that perform in the jail. But also to community corrections for housing the pre-trial individuals. As the sheriff noted in his email of June twenty sixth, more individuals there than the jail pod one had before it was closed with congregate living COVID circumstances, and it remains closed. But here's the big ticket learning is that the adults in custody in our jail have been increasingly a more dangerous population. And I think we need to make sure that we are telling that story to our legislators as well. Because that's putting a pinch on our funding as well. There, there are more serious felonies, mental health illnesses, substance use disorders, all higher levels of need that have to be managed appropriately within a jail set. all higher levels of need that have to be managed appropriately within a jail setting. It's all about investing in our own humanity, dealing in a humane manner. And the more the state has negative impact on what we have to do, the harder it is to do the humane job. Our staff is beyond stress, it's getting worse despite our best efforts. It's going to take us a couple of years, unfortunately, to work through this staff vacancy problem, but we know it's a big problem. Time, Catherine. So I just feel that we have to think about how we're telling the story to our state legislators. So that's all I wanted to add on that. So good job, team. I am so grateful that you're on Team Washington County and Team Clean Water Services and our joint effort. You're amazing. I don't want your job. I just don't have the skillset you have and you're so good at it. Thank you for being uniquely you and doing a terrific job.
Thank you.
Okay, so with our work session agenda, which I've managed to find, finally, we need to go into our last section, which is an executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero sub two survive for the purpose of performance evaluation. Colleagues, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, colleagues. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Okay, everybody, please exit the room as quickly as you can. So there, we get done. Good job.
We're the recharging stations.
Yeah.